Thank you. We have a quorum. The time is 10:30 and the floor is yours.
Thank you, sir. I'll call the word of the special Arizona Racing Commission meeting February 2nd. Moving to immediately to action item B, I will move that we enter executive session.
Second.
I have a motion for executive session by Chair Coolidge, seconded by Commissioner Gray. I will do the roll call. Chair Coolidge?
Yes.
Commissioner Gray?
Yes.
Commissioner Olson?
Yes.
Thank you. We will move into executive session. Chair Coolidge, I will call the roll if that's okay with you?
Yes, sir.
Right. Chair Coolidge?
Present.
Commissioner Gray?
Present.
And Commissioner Olson?
Present.
Thank you. This is 10:36 and the start of the second open session.
Chair Coolidge, sir. I do have a question or concern. It was not on today's agenda, but we do have the item, the Sims versus Sims, that is still ongoing. And I looked up the record and I know that there was a filing that was due on January 27th, which I'm sure our council did file. And then there's another filing due now on February 11th, 2020. And we've not heard or been given any update as to these filings. And I'm concerned on that, that we're not involved in this process.
I might move that we ask the department to report on this. Since it's not an agendized item, we can ask the department to report on it, I believe, in our next meeting in two weeks, unless you're asking Ms. Lena to give a quick update right now, but then we would likely move to executive session.
This would be our other counsel, because the department has our counsel, and we have our counsel that's representing us. So I would just like to get an update or some or our counsel could, before the next meeting, at least send us the filings that have been submitted to the court.
Agreed. Yeah, let's have the department make sure that they report on that. And then Mr. Director, if you wouldn't mind having that happen and get us any of the background information, that'd be great.
Absolutely. Mr. Terrell, I'll reach out to Camilla to provide the commission an update on that.
Thank you, sir. Move to action items C1, the Monarch Simulcast Horse Racing Signal. I know we have a lot of people to speak on this. I'm going to give each party three minutes, as I know we're probably going to have some back and forth, as it is Groundhog's Day. So we will get started on that. Looks like the first one I have is Mr. Hutton.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Bob Hutton, Arizona HPPA. As far as the Monarch situation is concerned, I haven't seen the contract, but my concern going forward is the unfavorable rates that have been delivered to Arizona Downs that doesn't even make them be able to be competitive, as far as that's concerned. I don't know why we keep going back here. As far as the Monarch situation is concerned, there's laws in the state that direct them how they should handle it, and they just refuse. So that's just my two cents on it. I don't know why we keep going back here and keep talking about this. It seems to be on the agenda every month. I don't know why it's on the agenda every month. It's a very easy call for Monarch, just to go ahead and send the signal and do a beta test for six months if they're if they're concerned about their one client here. But that's my two cents. I just, I don't get it. So I'll stop there.
And Mr. Hutton, just to give you a little bit of background as to why we are revisiting this again, the department, myself, and I know that some of the other commissioners have been working tirelessly with all of the racetracks to try to get this resolved in an amicable matter. So that's why you're seeing it again today. Countless hours have been spent on the department, the phone calls, Monarch and Turf and Arizona Downs and back and forth, trying to make this better and try to make the environment better for not only the betters in the state, but the tracks, you know, the employees at the racetracks. We're trying to get this done in an amicable fashion. So I appreciate the input and also just wanted to give you some background on that.
Appreciate it. The other issue is, and what I understand in the agreement that was provided, is that the there's a limitation on OTBs that could be opened. And I would tell you right now, Commissioner Coolidge, that I've looked at the OTB situation. Turf Paradise has 59 on their websites roughly, and 40 of them are open. I believe the the valley is underserved as far as the OTBs are concerned. I recently moved to Goodyear on the north side of the freeway, and they do have an OTB on the south side of the freeway. And it's a nice setup, but the growth out there is unbelievable. And I just think we're missing so much as far as being able to let commerce thrive as far as providing OTB locations or allowing Turf Paradise, Arizona Downs to open more OTBs as far as the state is concerned. And I know this is one of the stipulations in the contract, which doesn't make any sense to me at all, but I just wanted to throw that out there, too.
Understood. Appreciate the input.
Okay.
Move to Kelsey Lundee. Ms. Lundee?
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I apologize. I'm not joining via Google Meet. I couldn't get the link to work. But for the record, my name is Kelsey Lundee with Compass Strategies, and I am representing Turf Paradise. We would request a favorable vote on item C1, which is the Monarch Simulcast horse racing contracts for both Turf and for Arizona Downs. I agree with Mr. Hutton that this has been a conversation that has been going on for a very long time, ever since the legislation was passed, where we were promised that Monarch would never pull out of the state. And so since then, we have been trying to come to some sort of an agreement on getting Monarch back into the state. We believe that the contracts that Monarch put forward, both the last time that this commission approved the Turf Paradise contract, were in compliance with the law. We believe that the contracts before you today are in compliance with the law. And I would also just point out that Monarch has really come to the table to try to work with all parties and has agreed and given, I think, a big concession to allow Arizona Downs into their betting pools under the current contract, which was what they objected to under the previous contract. So we do believe that they're in compliance. I would point out that, again, I feel like that the voice of those who are horse racing fans in Arizona and those that bet on horse races in Arizona are not heard. We all know that the department gets numerous, numerous complaints every week that we do not have Monarch tracks simulcast in the state of Arizona. And I think that we all need to remember that everyone has lost revenue as a result of Monarch not being in the state. The department has lost revenue, the tracks have lost revenue, and the horsemen have lost revenue. And the bettors are very upset. They want to see the Monarch signal back, and they continuously voice that opinion with the department. So we would strongly encourage members of the commission to approve these contracts today. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, ma'am. Just one question on my end before I open it up to the other commissioners, if they have any. You said in here that the rates in this agreement are the same as Arizona Downs had before. Can you walk me through that?
Yes. My understanding is that the rate that was offered by Monarch to Arizona Downs is the same rate that they agreed to prior to Monarch pulling out of Arizona. So under their previous contract, when they were able to simulcast Monarch at their racetrack, that the rate was the same. I would also keep in mind, it is not unusual for rates to be different for different tracks. It's going to be based on how many race days they have, how much content Monarch uses from that racetrack. And so that would be why it is not unusual for a track who has more race days every year and has content to provide to Monarch is going to get a lower rate than a track that has less race days and no content for Monarch. So that is not something that's unusual for Arizona. My understanding is in other states, tracks that are in the same state are offered different rates, but they are reasonable and competitive. And there's no change to the better. They bet on the same race and spend the same money, whether they bet in an Arizona Downs OTB or a Turf Paradise OTB. And I hope that clarified it.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
I actually have a question on those rates. Were those rates that were offered to Arizona Downs that you said were the same previously, was that rates prior to 5, what was it, 5112U? Or is that, because I think once that came in, they were no longer offered. So I'm thinking those rates were prior to the law change.
So my understanding is that you are correct, Commissioner Gray. The rates that were offered were prior to the legislation passing, but if you read the legislation, it does not require a simulcast company to offer the same rate to each track. It says that they have to be reasonable and competitive. And certainly, there are a lot of factors that go into a simulcast company deciding what rates they will offer to different tracks. But again, I'm not aware that the simulcast companies offer the same rate to every track in the United States, nor am I aware on whether Monarch in particular has varying rates based on the track. And again, it's number of race days is taken into consideration. How much content is provided is taken into consideration. How many locations they have is also taken into consideration. So we believe that, like the previous Monarch contract that was approved by this commission, however many months ago, we believe that those contracts complied with 511U, and we believe that these contracts also comply with the state statute.
Thank you, ma'am.
And in fact, go beyond, in fact, go beyond the state statute, because the Ninth Circuit opinion did not require the simulcast companies to include the tracks in their betting pools. And Monarch has conceded and agreed to allow Arizona Downs into their betting pools, which I think is a big concession.
Thank you. Mr. Author, I see your hand raised. I was surprised not to see you sign up on this item. So I'm interested in hearing your two cents on this.
Thank you. We're having trouble figuring out how to sign in under the new regime, but I apologize for not having signed in. We do have Corey Langhoffer for our council who will speak. I just wanted to clear up the pricing issue. When we first opened our track, Monarch provided us with ridiculously high rates, and we accepted it for the short period of time that we were operating up at the track. And that was one of the motivations for us to achieve what we did at the legislature, where we basically received a rate from Monarch that made it so that we could not make any money if anybody bet on those tracks. So that's the answer to the question that Commissioner Gray asked. That rate was in effect for a short period of time, just up at the track. So I'm going to, I don't know what order do you want to go in, Commissioner Coolidge, but that's, I just wanted to clear up that one issue with respect to rates and the legal issues and matters with respect to the sufficiency of these contracts to comply with the law. I'd like to turn over to our council. Thank you.
You got it. Well, Mr. Langhoffer, we'll defer his other two minutes to you. You have five total.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The proposal for this contract is unlawful. And the reason for that is Section 5-112U. And as you know, Mr. Chairman, that prohibits anti-competitive agreements for these signals. This agreement, really the sets, the set of agreements together, is anti-competitive for three reasons. The first and the most important is that there are disparate rates or disparate fees charged to Arizona Downs and Turf Paradise. We haven't seen all of the Turf Paradise contract, but what we have seen, the fee schedule, shows that for the Delmar Thoroughbred Club, the fee charged to Turf Paradise would be 4.75%. And for the exact same signal to Arizona Downs, it would be 8%. And that's almost twice the fee for the same service. And as you all know, everyone on this commission knows, this is a business with very small margins, right? There is not an extra 3 and 1/4% to throw away and still run a profitable enterprise. And so when you've got two contracts that have such disparate fees for the exact same service, that's anti-competitive. That's not permissible under 5-112U. The second reason that it's anti-competitive is because it tries to bake into a contract the 60-mile rule, which, you know, essentially puts Arizona Downs out of business in Maricopa County, because of the location of Turf Paradise. And I don't have to walk you through the history of that issue with this commission. It's been argued many times. And this commission's come to the reasonable conclusion that if there were no OTB sites permissible within for Arizona Downs, within 60 miles of Turf Paradise's track, we'd effectively have a one-track state. You can't have a competitive industry in Arizona if we're going to ban tracks within OTB sites for Arizona Downs within 60 miles of turf. So by putting that into the contract, they're trying to end run around the decision with this commission and put Arizona Downs out of business. The third way that it's anti-competitive is trying to prohibit growth by Arizona Downs by requiring pre-approval of new OTB locations for Arizona Downs. This should be an open and competitive market. If Arizona Downs is able to offer an OTB site a better deal, more revenue, potentially more gambles, if they're even going to be opening a site for the first time, Arizona Downs should be able to do that. Work that out with the site owner. The way this contract is written, it requires pre-approval for those, basically a veto over expansion for Arizona Downs. These three features together, the disparate fees, the 60-mile rule, and the cap on growth, or really prohibition on growth, that makes us anti-competitive. We want to work this out. We want to have a, you know, functioning, competitive OTB market in the state. But the way Monarch is handling these contract proposals, it's anti-competitive. It just doesn't work. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Chairman Coolidge, this is Jerry Sims. May I respond, please?
Mr. Sims, since you're not signed up to speak, I'm going to let the last person signed up to speak, and then I will open the floor.
And before we do, Chair Coolidge, I have a question for Mr. Langhoffer. And so Ms. Lundee mentioned that there were some factors that, in her view, could lead to different rates. I think she said number of locations, number of races, and content. And I was just wondering what Arizona Downs' position on those different factors are and linking to different rates. I understand you're saying the rates are disparate, but do they have to be the same? If you can kind of touch on that from Arizona Downs' position?
Yeah, I don't know that we need to take the position that the rates must be identical, regardless of any other factors. I don't, I don't, I've not really taken a view on that. But just speaking off the cuff here to try to give you my honest reaction to it, even if some factors like number of sites or number of bettors per site would support somewhat different fees, it doesn't justify a 3 and 1/4% difference, nearly double the rate. This is transparently written not to sort of give a little bit of incentive for extra sites or extra bettors at a site, but to keep Arizona Downs from flourishing, to not have a competitive market. And so even if there's some discrepancy allowed, it's not 3 and 1/4% like we're seeing here.
Understood. And then a follow-up question to your three points. I think you said together, they make it anti-competitive. Is it your position that all three of them individually would also, or only because they're all together?
No. Again, that's a good question and not one that I think I've got, I've not discussed that with our client and said, you know, could you live with or, you know, if we got rid of two, which one could you live with most? And so I don't want to commit them to that just yet. And I don't think, even if we were to say, look, we can live with the third, but not the first two, Monarch has necessarily offered that. I'm happy to discuss that with our client, but what we have in front of us now is all three of these as a package, and it does not work. I will say, in response to what Ms. Lundee said earlier, that Arizona Downs had agreed to hire these, I think it is true that as part of negotiating a different settlement, which you are likely already familiar with, Arizona Downs had provisionally agreed to some conditions as part of a broader settlement with other terms in it, which aren't all in here, right? What they've done is, Jerry picked one concession that our client made in a different context and tried to get something over the finish line and said, see, now they're committed to this. That's not the case. They never committed to it as a standalone provision for all time. It was part of the package. It's now gone. And so I just want to say Arizona Downs is open to cutting. Yeah, we're trying to figure this out, but all three of these together, we can't make it work.
That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
I have maybe one question and then maybe voice an opinion of myself. Corey, I was reading a letter, and I can't remember if it was Dave or Tom Arthur who wrote it and sent it to the department, and it was forwarded on to the commissioners. And in there, they mentioned Statute 5112B and C that mandates the division of OTB income based upon racing season. So I spent some time this week actually reading those, and I was not seeing what they were talking to. So then I went and looked at the Statute 511, and I think I saw what they were referring to in there. And if there is already something in statute that states this is how it's going to happen, why aren't we following the law?
Are you asking why aren't we?
I mean, to me, it looked like the way it's supposed to be done is when one track is up and running, they get the OTBs. When the another track is up and running, they get it. And if we already have something in statute, I don't know why we've been dicking around for years when we have something in statute.
May I, I'm sorry. I'd like to know if I can respond to that to Commissioner Gray.
Sir, that question was directed to Corey Langhoffer, and then I will open the floor to you for three minutes.
Commissioner Gray, I appreciate the question. There's a lot of background here with the division of that purse that depends on conversations our clients have been having with staff for quite some time, as I understand it. What I like to do is prepare a letter that kind of summarizes some of that for you, so that I can be confident I'm getting the analysis and the history of the conversations correct, rather than trying to answer it off the cuff here. It's important, and I'm worried about getting some of the facts wrong. And so if it's all right with you, we'll send a letter over on that.
No, and I do agree, because when I was just trying to read the statute, I think these statutes were written years ago and are not easily understandable, and there's really nothing defining what the intent of them was. And I'm just bummed that we've never had a hearing regarding this, how people present what this statute really means, because we're supposed to be upholding the law, and if there is a law, why aren't we doing it?
I appreciate the question. We'll send a letter over to you with a longer analysis of the issue, Commissioner. Thank you.
And then I'll save my opinion on the 60-mile and OTBs till after everyone has talked.
You got it. Mr. Sims, the floor is yours. I see that Mr. Vansia is signed up. I'm assuming that you would like to take his minutes.
I did not quite understand that. If you could repeat it, please.
The next person signed up to speak is Mr. Vansia.
Yes.
I'm assuming you would like to take his minutes.
I'd like to take his minutes, if I may.
Yes, sir.
He can, I want him to be able to speak, but I just want to be able to also.
Go ahead, sir.
What I would tell you, Commissioner Gray, is that that which you just referred to was part of a different law that said that based on how many days you ran, you have a matching amount of days. have a matching amount of days in the, in a dark days, dark days where people go, it was a one for one, it was referred to as the one-for-one law. That went to the legislature and was changed. It's not something we can do here. You'd have to go to the legislature and get that changed if you wanted to try to put back that deal. Skipping on to the, the rates, Council, sorry, you said that we paid 4% for Delmar or something like that. We pay six and a quarter, just to be clear. They take the base rate, then they add workers comp, and they add something else. It comes up to about six and a quarter, six and a half. I'm going by memory, but I know it's not less than six and a quarter, and it might be six and a half. Going to the contract, we all agreed on a conference call with Commissioner, with Chairman Coolidge, with Director Casillas, Arizona Downs, and Turf Paradise to this deal, because the 60 mile rule is real. It's in the Interstate Horse Racing Act, and there's only a few things in that act, and this is one of the few that are in there. I think there's two or three items in there. Arizona Downs knew about the 60 mile rule, or should have, and they bought a track in Prescott. So the idea that they can avoid the 60 mile rule and just open up whatever they want to and wherever they want to is against the law, the Interstate Horse Racing Rule. That's what it says. So I would, I would tell you, it's unfair. We reached a deal where we were going to allow, and it even said in there that this would be, even though there's a 60 mile rule, we would wait on these seven sites they could have in Maricopa County. And we thought that was a big deal. It was also in the pool, that they'd be in the same pool. And we thought that was a, everybody agreed to it. And soon as everybody agreed to it, then all of a sudden, we're hearing Arizona Downs doesn't like it. But on the phone call, everybody agreed to this deal. And after it was either one year or two years, the commission would see if there was cannibalization during that period and determine where we go from there regarding Arizona Downs' amount of OTBs in Maricopa County. So we've, we've reached this deal, and now we reargue it and reargue it. It's unfair. As far as being competitive, the rate that they're paying at us, understand that we give Monarch 125 days a year, used to be even 156 days a year of racing that they then can sell. We also have many more OTBs, and we give them a lot more business. That's not unusual. Do you think Costco pays the same price as a corner store? I don't think so. So when they have to be competitive, they are. It's the same rate, and this is the real key point. The rates that they're paying in this contract and the rates that Turf Paradise are paying are the identical rates that they have. So then the Arizona Downs said, well, you know, that wasn't the case.
You're over time. Do you want to take Mr. Francia's time?
Just a minute of it, please.
Go ahead.
If that's okay. Let me just think, I just want to see. The rates being competitive, these are the same rates that they paid and the same rates we paid when they had it. And then they say, well, the OTBs are different. Well, it wasn't in the OTBs. Well, it wasn't in the OT, but it doesn't make any difference. That's a red herring. And the reason that it is, is we don't offer discounts to the customers on betting because we get a better rate. We don't say, when you make a bet at one of Turf Paradise's locations, you get a 10% discount. Then they would be exactly right. We're passing on the difference. The customer doesn't know what we pay for the signal. We offer the, the betting at the identical rate to the customer, both us and Arizona Downs. I'm done. Thank you for allowing me the time.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, you have two minutes yielded to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will abide and keep my comments to 30 seconds. Three things. I bow gratitude to you, Mr. Chairman, and to Director Casillas for very patiently keeping both sides together at the table to come to an agreement. And on that point, I actually thought we had an agreement. Apparently that is not the case. Mr. Sims covered some points that I would have, so let me just wrap it up. The one group that always gets left out of this conversation are the horse players. They don't have an organization that represents them. And here we are, beginning of the three-year-old, when the sophomore horse are trying to establish themselves and try to get to the Kentucky Derby, arguably America's most famous horse, and cannot offer it. This is not a good look for Arizona Racing, for the Racing Commission, for the department, that we cannot, I, again, I thought we have already agreed on this deal, bring these Monarch signals in here. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, sir. Last one I have here is Mr. Arthur. I'll give you two minutes, sir.
Thank you. It's actually, Chairman, it's actually Tom Arthur. Just to respond to a couple of things here. Reference to Mr. Mr. Gorey's point, the, the law that Mr. Sims referred to is not on the books, is still on the books, that statute. It was on the books when we bought the property and was one of the reasons we bought the property. To ignore it is frankly to ignore the law. Secondly, the numbers that Mr. Sims added as additional cost to the Delmar signal, for example, are numbers that would be added also. So that delta is still the same. And, and a couple of things, you know, the, the lowest hour increase over turf is 70% and there's a couple that are over twice as much. We did come to the table and we, we in fact suggested the beta test, and it was going to be a six-month test. And, well, by the time it morphed into what it is now, it's a one-year test with our fees being enormously higher, we can't make any money, limiting our expansion and requiring us to put up a $70,000, $75,000 security deposit, which is probably three quarters of the total handle, so it essentially adds up to a prepayment. We, we are, we are okay with, say, a 20% increase over what turf pays, but not 100%. That's ridiculous. We can't, there's no, so how this morphed into a simple send the beta test in and into Arizona Downs has a crazy fee, they got to put up a huge security deposit, they can't expand their network, and they keep referencing this 60 mile rule. Understand that 60 mile rule was there to protect live meats. Turf killed the live meat on their own by opening 50 OTBs within miles. You know, if they really cared about the live meat, they'd shut down their OTBs and they'd put, you know, toilet paper in women's restrooms. And that, it, the, the, the live meat is something that's gone by the boards, and the 60 mile rule is not there to protect somebody's OTB network. And as far as we agreed to a deal, we agreed to this concept, but it's changed, and it's at a point now where if we'd agree to this, we'd be signing our death warrant by tying into losing money, not expanding, and making it a one-year term. We're, we're happy with the beta test. Send the Monarch signal in, and I would ask turf, turf, are, are you not willing to just let the signal come in? We'll have the same contract, we'll pay a point more. That's one thing. And I really don't understand the reference to the Kentucky Derby that Mr. Francia made. We, we get the Kentucky Derby, that's not a, that's not a Monarch track, that's Churchill. So, you know, it's, I, I, they, they, they make it sound like we had this agreement. We have an agreement, but then the contracts came out, and I think Mr. Director Casillas would, would agree that it was subject to fair contracts, and we can't survive with that contract. You know, the fees we paid before was for only the OT, only the track, not OTBs, and it was one of the things that motivated us to pass the legislation. We couldn't get the commission to approve a rule. Director Casillas says, I'm not doing anything unless you get, pass legislation. We rolled up our sleeves, we passed legislation. So as a result of that, it has to be a competitive fee. To reference an agreement we had with Monarch that predated our passing of that statute is, is ridiculous. I'm also not so sure that there are disparate rates with, with different tracks around the country. Maybe there are, but we've seen no, and they quote no examples of that. And finally, we'd like to have the Monarch signal. It's good for, it enhances the betting experience. But as I've showed on numerous presentations, it has not hurt our handle. What's hurting our handle is the reduction in OTBs, COVID, 777 million of sports book bet in two months. You know, there's several million of that that came from horse betting and the advanced deposit wagering improvements. So a guy can bet from his phone and a computer easily now. It's not, it's, it's, guys are going to bet on what they're going to bet on, on what's available. So the lack of a Monarch signal is not hurting our handle. It, it affects the quality of betting, and we want to get them here. But I'm sure the horse players would say, if it's a choice between the survival of Arizona Downs and getting the Monarch signal, and I think the HBPA would back us up, we want the survival of Arizona Downs. So, and that's really what's at stake here. So that's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I have a quick question for you, because Arizona Downs has been quite vocal about the fact that Monarch doesn't generate revenue for the state. So if, if that is indeed the case, then why are we going back and forth and being worried about a contract if it's not generating anything?
Well, we, we, we want, we, we want them here. We want people to be able to bet on Santa Anita, Delmar, Gulfstream, but their, their impact on the handle, and I've shown numbers, is, is really not material. But we'd like to have them, the horsemen like to bet on them. But I, I mean, Director Coolidge, I don't know if you saw, I mean, Commissioner Coolidge, Chairman Coolidge, if you saw my analysis I sent into the commission, but
I did.
I mean, you know, the handle was down, but the OTBs, it was only down $25,000 per missing OTB. And so my, my point is if that, if those OTBs were there, our handle might even be up. Now, we have additional headwinds now with this sports betting. I think you brought it up, and you were correct. It's going to be a challenge for us, and this modernized ADW where you can bet on your computer now and don't need to go to an OTB and don't need to use your phone, that cumbersome way, that's also going to hit us. So I, I just, I, I think Monarch and turf has done a really good job of convincing everybody that we're in dire straits because we don't have the Monarch signal. It just isn't true.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there a representative from, or any, my commissioners have anything on that? Is there a representative from Monarch on the line by chance? That's incredible. Did you meet it? Mr. Arthur, you still have your mic on.
That was my brother talking. I told him to be quiet, and I'm shutting this off. Thanks.
Commissioner Coolidge, this is Bob Hutton. Can I bring another point to the question you asked, Mr. Arthur?
Look forward to it, sir.
Okay. It also, the, the Santa Anita, the lack of the Santa Anita signal coming into Arizona does hurt the OTB owners, the people that actually own the facility. As a horse player myself, I will tell you, when the East Coast and Midwest tracks are over, around 3:30, 4 o'clock, people would leave the OTBs now, where if Santa Anita was here, they would stay longer, spend more money, drink more. So it does, it, it doesn't affect, it, it affects the horsemen to a certain level as far as, yes, we'd love to have the, the signal come in. I don't think it affects, at the rate the numbers, like, it's not at 40%. It probably, it might be a 10 or 15% number, but it does affect the OTB owners because they lose customers earlier than they would have.
Chairman, this is Jerry Sims. May I respond to something you asked?
60 seconds, sir.
Won't even need that. Our, our percentage, we went back to our 19, 2018, 2019 numbers, we're off 30%. How anybody can think that with all the calls that the department gets, that we get, that I'm sure you commissioners probably get, that these bettors want to bet that, and because of that, our business is off 30%. So, and, and the law that he was referring to, the law that Mr. Arthur quoted is accurate, but the part that was changed at the legislature was the one-for-one rule, which was part of the deal that used to exist. Thank you for giving me the time.
Mr. Arthur, I'll do the same for you.
I'm sorry. The, the, if you look at the information I sent you, the, the handle was off approximately, oh, I think about $6 million bucks from when we had Monarch to when we didn't have Monarch. But there were, if you included our participation, the handle was only down $2 million, and there were 16 or 17 fewer OTBs. The money, the handle per OTB now is in excess of what it was back then. So, I mean, we're, we're supplying facts. The turf is not down 30%. It's, you know, the people are picking up that shortage. So, and again, I, I sent you numbers that are facts. I'm not just quoting, pulling something out of the air. Those are the real numbers. So, you know, I, I, if, and it came from your department. So, you know, I, I don't, and, and $6 million is, I mean, that, that's 6% off, not 30. We're not down 30 bucks. It's, it's absurd, and it's just not accurate. And, and please refer, look at those numbers I gave you, and you, and you could see, it's really an OTB issue, not, but, but Bob Hutton's absolutely right. We want Monarch here. It enhances the quality of the betting.
That's, that's your time, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have an unknown signed in to speak. Can you announce yourself?
Mr. Chairman, I believe that Dave Johnson asked to speak on this topic.
Didn't have him online. Mr. Johnson, do you need time?
Chairman Coolidge, members of the commission, if you could just give me a couple of minutes, I, I, not even a couple of minutes. Everybody's really repeating what we all were going to say anyways. But what, what I would like to just add to what Mr. Sims said was, when the Monarch signal was turned off two years ago, and we're talking two years now of not having the Monarch signal, when it was turned off two years ago, up until the time the pandemic hit, our numbers show that we were down nearly 30%. Those are factual numbers. I guess it's, what, whose facts do you want to believe? I, I supplied numbers to the department and to the commission that showed how much we were down from the time we turned off the Monarch signal until the OTB network was closed because of the governor's order, and that was nearly 30%. That's an apples-to-apples comparison because it was the same OTBs. It was the same timeframe that we were taking all the other signals. There's nothing else that changed on that. And, you know, I, I would like to thank you, I would like to thank Director Casillas for, for trying to get us all together. You know, we were supposed to have a beta test. We, we tried really hard. We all thought there was an agreement. I mean, we, we did agree. We all agreed to it. And now to get this far and not be able to make it happen, I mean, it's a beta test. It's supposed to be able to see what we can do. And if we don't try it, we're never going to get to the point where we, we are going to find out exactly how much we're missing. So anyways, I'd like to wrap that up. I just want to say thank you for allowing me the time to speak.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Any comments from my commissioners?
I have a few. First of all, I think we, we should stop referring to the turning it off. What happened back when the Monarch signal was no longer brought into Arizona, the commission at that time was enforcing the statute, which at that time, Monarch was not willing to abide by. So it was not turned off just willy-nilly, it was enforcement of a statute. Regarding the 60 mile thing, I was very disturbed to see that even in the contract to Arizona Downs. Reading the Interstate Horsemen Act, nowhere do I see in there that Monarch has the authority to regulate racing in the state of Arizona. That is the commission's job, and the commission has taken a stance on the 60 mile rule. And with regards to the 60 mile rule, when you read it, it starts off with a mandate and then follows up with the word shall, which the Supreme Court has defined as may. So you've got a shall or a mandate and a, you may do. I don't even think the 60 mile rule, if it was, went to court, would be enforceable. So shame on them for putting that in the contract with, with Arizona Downs. Secondly, we, the commission and the department, we again regulate in Arizona. It's up to us to determine who gets OTBs, not Monarch. It is up to us. And to put a limit on a And to put a limit on a business as to what they can do, that's not business-friendly. And if I remember right, Governor Ducey declared Arizona to be business-friendly, and that is not business-friendly. And as it stands right now, I, I'm done with Monarch. And if people are frustrated as to why they're not getting a signal, don't call us, don't call the department. Call Belinda Stronach and ask her why one of her businesses refused to abide by the laws of Arizona. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Appreciate it. I'll go ahead and move that we enter executive session.
Second.
I have a motion by Chair Coolidge, a second by Commissioner Olson. I will do the roll call. Chair Coolidge?
Yes.
Commissioner Olson?
Yes.
Commissioner Gray?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes. We'll move to executive session.
I have a motion by Chair Coolidge, a second by Commissioner Olson. I will do the roll call. Chair Coolidge?
Yes.
Commissioner Olson?
Yes.
Commissioner Gray?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes. We'll move to executive session. It looks like all commissioners are in attendance. I will do the roll call. Chair Coolidge? It looks like all commissioners are in attendance. I will do the roll call. Chair Coolidge?
Present.
Chair, or Commissioner Gray?
Present.
And Commissioner?
Present.
Thank you. We have a corner. The time, time is 11:34 in the chair. The floor is yours, Chair Coolidge.
Thank you, sir. Before I chime in on this, any of my commissioners want to make any motions or discuss?
Well, as, before going into executive session, you know, I, I do feel that there is some excessive, unreasonable fees here. And, you know, again, adding into 60-mile language into Arizona Downs contract, and it's not added into turf paradises, I don't think is right. And again, that is a job of the commission. It's not Monarch's job. And also, the limit on OTBs, I think that's unreasonable and, and excessive. That is, again, our job here in Arizona to regulate. And also requiring Arizona Downs to put up a, a fee, I think it was $75,000, and then in some cases, charge them almost double. That's excessive and unreasonable. So with that, I would move to deny the request on the Monarch signals.
I'll second it.
Thank you. I have a motion by Commissioner Gray, and a second by Commissioner Olson. I will do the roll call. Chair Coolidge?
No.
Commissioner Gray?
Yes.
And Commissioner Olson?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes.
Okay, we'll move to
Commissioner, or Chairman, I, I would just like to say thank you. I know when I was the chair, I put you in a, a tough spot. I think that was your first meeting. Thank you for, for, for all the effort that you've put into this. Much appreciated.
I appreciate that. And, you know, the, the difficulty for me on this one, and I'll say for the commission as a whole, is, as we have all worked tirelessly to bring all of these parties together, as far as, you know, the 60-mile rule is something that we are being watched vividly across the country. I've had conversations with Kentucky Downs and lots of other racetracks that are actively watching what we do here for one reason or another. As far as the locations go, I agree with you on that. The deposit, you know, we know that at one point, there was a deliverable and, and a, a lot of dollars that were owed to the track at one point, which is understandable. I wish, and I, I'm very disappointed that, A, Monarch is not here to discuss this, since they're the ones that decided to rearrange the contract that we came together to create in the state and try to bring them back in. So I understand where everyone's coming from on that. It's, it's just really disappointing that we can't seem to make headway here and help ourselves, for the bettors, the, the horsemen, and the tracks themselves. So it's disappointing. We'll move to action item, excuse me, C2, request from Arizona Downs off-track betting facility at the Luke Greenway American Legion Post One. This looks like, let's see next. Remind me, is this the same, no, this is a different one that we looked at before, correct? Mr. Arthur, go ahead.
No, this is, I, I believe this is the third time we've brought up this particular OTB. And the, for the first two, it was either tabled or continued. So we'll try and
Okay, so this is, I, I thought it was a, a different location, but look, okay, got it. Any comments or questions from my fellow commissioners?
I would just like to hear from the department, ensuring that all licensing and everything is in place, or if there's any licensing that would have to take place after the commission took action on this.
Morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. This is Juan Estrada filling in for Mr. Duncan. In regards to that item, all is in order. Inspections conducted. It's just pending your approval. With everything that I've seen, I would recommend that that OTB side be approved.
Understood. Well, it's Groundhog's Day. We're back to square one on the same thing that we tabled before, only because we can't move anything forward. Unless my commissioners have a motion, I'm gonna make my motion.
I would move to approve the Luke Greenway American Legion Post Number One, and that they have, everything has been met, and I don't know, believe we would have the authority to keep uphold, or withholding discussion and a vote on, on them.
Commissioner Olson, do you wanna second that?
I'm, I'm just wondering, um, no, and I guess because I wanna go back to discussion for just a second. I apologize for the tardiness. Wondering if there's any positions opposing this, and if those could be voiced at this time.
Should I withdraw my motion so we could have, or hear some, if there's any opposing?
We don't have a second, so we'll, we'll withdraw. Doesn't sound like it, Commissioner.
All right. Commissioner Gray, if you want to make your motion again.
I'm old. I can't remember things.
We have a motion from Commissioner Gorey to approve the request for Arizona Downs on their off-track betting facility at Luke Greenway American Legion Post One.
I'll second it.
Thank you. I have a motion by Commissioner Gray, a second by Commissioner Olson. I will do the roll call. Chair Coolidge.
No.
Commissioner Gray.
Yes.
And Commissioner Olson.
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes.
Appreciate it. We'll move to action item C three, Turf Paradise Racing LLP, request for approval on their twenty twenty-two charity race dates. That'd be Friday, March one, or excuse me, Friday, March eleventh, Friday, April twenty-second and Saturday, May seventh. Any discussion from Mr. Estrada? I'm assuming we have everything we need for that.
We do. I believe Mr. Dave Johnson had something to say about that.
Chairman, Chairman Commissioners, thank you. I can't say how important this is. This money always goes to benevolent causes in the racing industry. For example, when horses might go down if there's an injury to a jockey and they need money to help pay their bills. That's where most of this money goes. The last time Arizona Downs had to shut down and the horses got stranded up in Prescott. We donated fifty thousand dollars out of this account to help provide food and assistance for the horsemen so that they could make arrangements to go to other racetracks and help take care of them by feed for the horses and so forth. So we would ask that you approve these states. They're in line with what the Arizona statutes provide. So, thank you.
Appreciate the the input on that, sir. That's admirable what you guys are doing and appreciate you making time to to put that together and formally to donate that. So thank you very much for the background. That said, I'll move that we approve the request for approval on the twenty twenty-two charity race dates for Turf Paradise.
I'll second.
Thank you. I have a motion by Chair Coolidge, a second by Commissioner Gray. I will do the roll call. Chair Coolidge.
Yes.
Commissioner Gray.
Yes.
And Commissioner Olson.
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes and those charity race dates are approved.
Move to action item C four, the simulcast agreements pursuant to ARS five dash one-one-two U with Arizona Downs. That'd be Louisiana Downs, Sam Houston and Sunland Park. Mr. Estrada.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, everything's in order. All documents are in. I would recommend that those five U get approved.
Any questions from my fellow commissioners on these?
Nothing from myself.
I'll go ahead and move that we approve Arizona Downs simulcast agreements in Louisiana Downs, Sam Houston and Sunland Park.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion by Chair Coolidge, a second by Commissioner Gray. I will do the roll call. Commissioner, Chair Coolidge.
Yes.
Commissioner Gray.
Yes.
And Commissioner Olson.
Yes.
Thank you. Those simulcast agreements are approved.
Dropping down to four B, Turf Paradise's, Aqueduct, Tampa Bay, Mahoning, Penn National, Sam Houston, Charlestown, Parks, Fairgrounds, Oaklawn, Turf Way, Louisiana Downs and Los Alameda's. Mr. Estrada.
Sir, Mr. Chairman, like the previous, they all submitted their contract. Everything looks in order. I would recommend you approve.
Just that one question, are any of them Monarch tracks? I don't think so, but I just wanted to verify.
I thought Alameda's was. Am I incorrect?
Mr. Johnson, go ahead, sir.
Chairman Coolidge, Commissioners. No, none of these racetracks are Monarch signals. The Los Alameda's request is for the quarter horse meat. Los Alameda's is affiliated with Monarch, but only for thoroughbred meats. The request for this is for a quarter horse meat, the quarter horse meat that you're around.
Thank you.
So I have a question on that one. The Lena, are you on the line?
I am on the line, yes.
Do we have any suggestions from the Attorney General's Office regarding a quarter horse versus a main event for the simulcast agreement?
No, Chairman. Nothing from the Attorney General's Office. It doesn't appear the signal comes from Monarch.
Okay.
Right. Now that I think back on it, I do believe we had this the last couple of years. They do run separate. There are quarter horse and then there is thoroughbred and the quarter horse is is separate signal from the thoroughbred.
Got it. Thank you. Mr. Johnson, do you still need to add to that?
Thank you.
No.
I'll go ahead and move that we approve Turf Paradise's Aqueduct, Tampa Bay Downs, Mahoning Valley, Penn National, Sam Houston, Charlestown, Parks Racing, Fairgrounds, Oaklawn, Turf Way, Louisiana Downs and Los Alameda's.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion by Chair Coolidge and a second by Commissioner Gray. I will do the roll call. Chair Coolidge.
Yes.
Commissioner Gray.
Yes.
And Commissioner Olson.
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes and those simulcast agreements are approved.
So we'll move to the supporting simulcast horse racing import signals pursuant to the IHA Section three zero zero four eight three with Arizona Downs, Louisiana Downs, Sam Houston and Sunland Park. Mr. Estrada, I don't see anything jumping out to me here. You have anything on your end?
No, sir. Mr. Chairman, all we were missing is a five U approval. Everything else looks good. Recommend you approve.
We'll move that we approve Arizona Downs, Louisiana Downs, Sam Houston and Sunland Park.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion by Chair Coolidge and a second by Commissioner Gray. I will do the roll call. Chair Coolidge.
Yes.
Commissioner Gray.
Yes.
And Commissioner Olson.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes and those import signals are approved.
Mr. Estrada, looking at five B without the five one-one-two, now that they have the five one-one-two approvals, are there any matters within one through twelve that we need to identify?
There is not. All documents are in.
I'll move that we approve Turf Paradise's, Aqueduct, Tampa Bay Downs, Mahoning Valley, Penn National, Sam Houston, Charlestown, Parks Racing, Fairgrounds, Oaklawn, Turf Way, Louisiana Downs and Los Alameda's.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion by Chair Coolidge and a second by Commissioner Gray. I will do the roll call. Chair Coolidge.
Yes.
Commissioner Gray.
Yes.
And Commissioner Olson.
Yes.
Thank you. Those simulcast horse racing import signals are approved.
Chair, I would just like to make a comment. I would like to say thank you to staff and Arizona Downs and Turf Paradise. I think this is the first meeting in quite a while where everything has been in order. So good job, everyone. Very much appreciated.
Couldn't agree with that more. Thanks, Commissioner. We'll move to the information reports. I will say if there is nothing pressing, we will be seeing each other again in a couple of weeks. So no, we are all running tight on time. So I appreciate that. If there is something pressing, we look forward to hearing it. Information reports regarding Rito's permit and race dates. Director Casillas.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to give the commission just a brief overview of what's going on with Rito. Obviously, they have been a longstanding racetrack in the state of Arizona and we've had some delays with their permit application and conducting financial review of their viability. We've been working diligently with Rito's staff, Mr. Ed Ackery and Mike Wise and others to look at their their financial condition in order to put on a race meet this year. We have discovered some financial concern. We're working with them on a daily basis. I know that with the state and federal grant monies that there they will have some monies available to them. They have submitted some projections to the department for consideration for putting them on the agenda to get their permit approved and race states approved. We gave the fifteen day notice to try to accommodate this. We will continue to work with them regarding their finances. They're projecting approximately a hundred and twenty thousand a day in revenue coming in from admission, parking and food and beverage sales. We have done some rough calculations and determined that it costs them approximately one point two million to run a race meet. And they're without the state federal monies being contributed to them, they would be running a little shy to run the meet. So we're working with them, like I said, on a daily basis. I'm hoping that come the fifteenth, everything is on track, that we can proceed with having you review their their financial state to determine whether or not you want to make an approval on their permit and race stage. But I just wanted to give everybody an update of what's going on and where we stand with this matter.
Thank you, Director. Look forward to reviewing that in a couple of weeks and hopefully approving with with all the appropriate documents. And thank you for making it a priority.
Thank you, Rudy. I know you probably got tired of me calling you, but I do appreciate all the work you did to make this happen.
You're welcome, sir.
Move to D two, which is track safety reports.
Actually, if it would be possible, I would like to speak to this item before Dr. Gail, if possible.
Commissioner, go ahead.
And please bear with me. Hopefully I can get this done within a couple of minutes, but I realize that injuries and death are inherent in the sport. They're going to happen. What I cannot accept is the thought of how many horses have been euthanized due to the improper track maintenance or the failure of those charged with the safety of all participants to call timeout. And most of all, the failure of providing sufficient funding to ensure the safety is job one for all. What I'm holding, and I know those of you on the phone can't see it, but it is the fatality tracker that we have for Turf Paradise. We're up to, when this was given to me a week or two weeks ago, twenty horses have been euthanized. And I know another of another one since then that died, I think it was last week in the gate. That puts us at that time, two point eight zero per one thousand starts. That is a deplorable number. And along with that, since Turf Paradise has opened, we've had three failures involving the equine ambulance. One of them, a hose was hooked up improperly. Another one, timed, the second incident, the equine ambulance became inoperable and was unable to assist a horse on the track. The third time, incident in the paddock in what was described as, quote to me, "a shit show with the equine ambulance unable to get into the paddock until the tenth try and an incompetent track vet," unquote. Regarding horse in item two, the horse suffered for several minutes out on the track while another trailer was found and brought in. This horse was then made to step up into this trailer. Now, remember, it had a broken leg into this other trailer that did not have lowering capabilities. By God, why wasn't that horse just euthanized out in the track? It was training hours. There was no public there to see it. What were we concerned about? Getting the horse moved out of there as quickly as possible in a trailer that was not set up to handle that horse? At that point in time, training should have been canceled for the rest of the day because the equine ambulance, or as it's called in the statute, horse ambulance, is defined in statute. It must be approved by the department. So if the approved equine ambulance was now broke down, training should have ceased and taking care of that horse, doing the most in that that movement of making that horse get up there. To me, that was inhumane. And we keep pulling stunts like this. We're going to be out of business. We keep killing horses like this. We're going to be out of business. And I have to ask myself, how did we get to this point? Because I know in two thousand seventeen, and Dr. Gail, you were part of it and you did a magnificent job then, Greg Stiles and many others. We came up with, or you guys did, great plans, great ideas to implement so that we could lower the number of horses being euthanized at the track. What happened in two thousand seventeen? Our budget got whacked. Somebody went down to the legislature and lobbied to reduce the RWA. For those who weren't around, RWA is an assessment we put on each race that funded the department. We got whacked by a million dollars. We were not able to implement bringing in another state vet. We were not able to implement bringing in another safety steward. And here we are, still with the same problems we had in two thousand seventeen and the years before that. It's Groundhog Day, I know. We're still killing horses at a terrible rate out there. And I'm disgusted about it and I'm tired of it. We need to take action. The legislature, I know they're going to say, oh, we're against taxes. We don't want to raise taxes. Well, guess what? You don't want to be known as a horse killer either. Restore the RWA, restore our budget so we can do what's right for the horses. We have to do what's right for all participants. That's human and equine. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Always appreciate your your input on these and the passion that you have behind protecting these horses. It's a priority for everyone and appreciate it. Dr. Gail.
Yes, thank you, Chair Coolidge and Commissioners, and thank you again for that report. Commissioner Gray, as you mentioned, there have been a total now of twenty-two horses at the turf meet since it began in November. Of those, I believe nine are that had occurred during racing. Just double check here a minute. And eight were due to illness and five were during training hours. So that comes to a total of twenty-two. And as as Commissioner Gray mentioned, that's a two point eight over a thousand starts rate, which again, the national rate is generally around one point five. Previous to the month of January for the year of twenty twenty-one, the rate was one point nine four per thousand, including Turf Paradise and Arizona Downs. So that was a bit of an improvement on previous years. Unfortunately, this month of January, we did have a week where there were four horse breakdowns within one week. Again, this problem is multifactorial. We can't really point to one thing in regards to why we had so many at one time and other times it might be one or two every couple of weeks. But again, we're waiting on the postmortems, which we do on all racing fatalities. And we will be having a safety committee meeting later this month to go over those reports and see if we can see any common factor that we can focus some attention on resolving. The other piece I would mention is that Turf Paradise did hire Dr. Alyssa Butler to be the track veterinarian. She is an Arizona native and went to school at Midwestern University in Glendale, has a great deal of enthusiasm and she and I meet prior to the races to discuss which horses we consider might be of concern. And also after the races, when she lets me know which horses had problems after the race with either lameness, bleeding or some other soundness issue. I think that communication has been key and is going to maybe greatly improve, or I would hope that it greatly improves our outlook here for the remaining half of the Turf Paradise meet going forward. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Dr. Gail, appreciate the the input. Commissioner Nora, I know you're going to follow up with me and follow up after this one, but can you tell us when that safety committee meeting is going to happen? And when can we expect hopefully a report from you on that?
I would say it would most likely be the latter half of the month. I haven't set a date yet. Some of the, again, the fatalities we had were the latter half of January. It takes about three weeks to get our postmortem reports back from the university. So I'd be looking definitely after the next commission meeting, but sometime later this month.
I know I'm speaking on behalf of myself, but I know my fellow commissioners would be interested in hearing a recap from that, whether directly via email or. I know the next commission meeting will probably be before that. But we'd like to keep that posted, and if you can give us a recap on that, we'd very much appreciate it.
Absolutely.
And just as information on that, typically, one of the commissioners will attend that meeting. So hopefully, there will be an invite. And Doc, I did have one on the horse that I think was last week died in the in the gate. Will there be an acropsy done on that horse?
Yes, and actually, that report I did get back. And in that particular case, nothing was fractured, but there was bleeding internally in the in the on the brain, which again rendered the horse senseless and necessary to have it put down.
All right. And again, I've seen you out there when I visit, the work you're doing. You're just a fantastic vet. I wish you were a regular vet so I could bring my dogs to you. And I really appreciate the effort you put into the pre-race exams. I've watched you do that. You do a fantastic job. But I mean, I've just been here for 10 years now, and it's it's Groundhog Day. Every year, these numbers there are just like this. And I know turf has tried. They've they even came up with a fantastic claiming rule that I even had the jockeys telling me, we need a change in the claiming rules. We need a change in the claiming rules. And turf came up with the change, but unfortunately, we can't have that change because claiming rules are defined in statute. And there's just things that we could be doing, but we can't. Either it's we're not allowed to make rules, we don't have the budget, and we're just killing horses if we don't do something. And I'm just pleading, please, let's do something. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I be heard, please?
Commissioner, or Commissioner, Director, before I let you jump in, the only thing I'm going to add to that is we have another meeting coming up in two to three weeks. We also, over the last couple of different, couple of meetings, have had the public report or and public comment period really advocating for a lot of the same things that we're hearing today, which is, you know, tightening up track situations. So if you could spend some time with your team, and I realize things are lighter right now, dialing into those safety issues that we're hearing and trying to identify things that we could do to prevent these types of issues, which I know that you do on a daily basis. It would be very helpful for us to hear how we can help on on our end, ensure that we're protecting these horses.
Yes, sir. We have taken some proactive approaches with this matter. We've been working diligently with Turf Paradise to upgrade equipment, purchase new equipment. They got new tractors. They got recently a wheel roller to seal the track. They've repaired their water trucks. We're monitoring with the track superintendent on a daily basis, the track condition and whether it needs any soil or materials put into it. We had Turf Paradise hire a consultant to come out and look the track over every couple of weeks and provide recommendations. Additionally, with the state and federal grant monies that the permities are receiving in the contracts we rendered to the permities regarding these revenues, along with the contract provisions, we did put a provision in there that part of that money would be held out to allow the department to hire a department veterinarian in addition to Dr. Gail so that we can have 100% pre-race exams by a certified veterinarian. So that is forthcoming, and all permities signed off on that provision in the contract. So we are making some headway. It's small steps at a time. But Commissioner Gorey is absolutely correct. By the limitation they put on the RWA has severely hurt the division where we were required to riff staff at one point. I had the staff of 43 people. That's when the greyhounds were running, and I had had to riff all the way down to a staff of nine full-time employees. I do have some contractors that are just temp help, and it makes it difficult when these people leave and I have untrained staff out there. So I am all in favor of getting the legislature to change the law on the RWA so we have flexibility to raise and lower that RWA percentage as necessary. So I just wanted to give that update that there is a provision to hire an additional vet coming forward.
Appreciate that, and look forward to any communications that you can give us from those additional safety reports that you're getting from your crew, even if it's via email through week to week as you get them. I know the rest of the commissioners and myself would be looking forward to seeing this.
And I just want to thank Rudy. Rudy, I mean, if I had had your job when this happened, I think I would have retired. But you have done an amazing job with the limited staff budget you have. And I did just want to ask Doc Gail, when she does have the meeting, I don't know if she's seen it yet, but Pennsylvania Commission, they approved the 10-step plan to approve equine safety. Not all the items do I agree with, but I think there are some good items in there that you might want to take a look at to see if there's things we could we could do here as well.
Absolutely. Thanks for making me aware. We have used some other resources. The Mid-Atlantic Race Track Coalition did something similar, and we have tried to incorporate those suggestions. So appreciate your letting me know about that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Director Casillas or Mr. La Forest, you want to give the quick project report?
Oh, there's no fear that Mr. La Forest is on. I don't believe that there's any concerns at this point. I would hope that he would have notified me if there was. So I don't have anything further on that matter.
Yeah, I hope he he would have as well. So we'll look forward to it in a couple of weeks. Mr. Gessman, any important updates to have on the Horse Race Act?
Yes, Commissioner, Chairman Coolidge and Commissioners. Just a second, we have some background here. Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We're five months away from this HISA going into effect, and a lot of the things you just talked about are going to be affected by HISA. First of all, just a reminder, HISA is not going to cover quarter horses. So the state of Arizona, like many other states, will have two sets of rules, one for quarter horses and one for thoroughbreds. They'll have two different standards and two different medication programs. So I don't know if anybody's even thought about those things or if anything's been done with the department in those areas. As far as the lawsuit goes, it's last week, the state of Texas joined in with the lawsuit with the HB, the National HBPA. And they also joined in the state attorney general's lawsuit from Oklahoma. So they are, they have jumped in and are behind both lawsuits in trying to stop HISA from going into effect. Also, the Texas Racing Commission has filed to file an amicus brief on on both lawsuits that they will be filing. There has been a hearing date set for the HBPA lawsuit. It's going to be on February 16th. The judge will hear arguments from both sides of the lawsuit. I guess going back to what you guys just briefly discussed is the million-dollar question with the whole program is who's going to pay for it? USADA has backed away with from negotiations as being the testing organization that's going to do the test. They, I don't know if it's a negotiating ploy or if they are truly withdrawing completely. They are in negotiations with the USF, USCF. That's the United States Equestrian Foundation. They do all the work for the the jumping programs throughout the United States and then the equestrian team that competes around the world. They do the testing of athletes and the testing of the horses for them. So that's still up in the air. But again, the million-dollar question is who's going to pay for all this? I heard some conversations in a meeting that was held the other day that their first thoughts or their first avenue will be to go to the states and tap into their budgets for for overseeing horse racing. Then they will go to the tracks and assess the tracks for how many days they race. And they're also considering going to the betters and taking a cut of the and putting a tax on the takeout. So I mean, there's, there's still a lot up in the air for them to put this, implement this in five months. I know ARCI has been having meetings. I'm sure Rudy and Brian have been involved in them, and they've got some ideas on how we were going to approach this in Arizona. But that's kind of where things stand today. Any questions?
None here. Appreciate the update. Okay, we'll move to the permitty reports. Let's just try to keep these under a minute. American Greyhound Racing.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Director Casillas, good afternoon. Aaron Feinberg on behalf of AGR. Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, I may run over a minute, so I apologize. I would like to bring, I would like to bring to your attention something that I find relevant to our simulcast business and something that all permities that have an OTB network need to be aware of. I actually have two separate comments that are unrelated, but the first one is that occasionally bars and OTBs change ownership. They change names. Sometimes they change physical location. I completely understand that certain changes to an OTB should and do trigger regulatory oversight. With that said, I've been in my role here for four years, and within my OTB network, I have had two OTBs change ownership, and one OTB has changed their name, but the physical location did stay the same. While I believe a physical location change of an OTB or an operator change, meaning if an OTB flips from Tucson Greyhound Park to AGR or AGR to Tucson, or as we recently saw with an OTB that switched from Turf Paradise to Arizona Downs, those scenarios that I just mentioned would absolutely require department approval, local city council approval, racing commission approval. With that said, I experienced my third ownership change last week. Padre Murphy's, for the second time in 14 months, was sold to a new owner. For some reason, this ownership change triggered something different where it was called into question by the department if we could continue to operate there because of an owner change. Please note, we have operated this location since December 1993 uninterrupted under owner Tom Boyle. When this location was recently purchased by a new owner in December 2020, it was allowed to continue operating uninterrupted, both dogs and horses. I am not sure why January 2022, something would be different, but it was called into question, and as far as I understand, it's still being considered by the department, the status of this OTB. So my point in bringing this up is I welcome a policy change if that's what that's what is required when a change occurs to an OTB. But I ask that that policy is publicized, and all stakeholders are informed of that policy in advance of its regulation. Since I do not believe this is statute, but I would ask the commission to please consider asking the department to please schedule an informational group session with the stakeholders to ensure that there's no gray area here on what policy will be enforced under the different scenarios that I that I just previously mentioned. I respect the decisions of the department and the commission, and I appreciate the dedication to regulate our business, but temporarily closing or interrupting simulcast business ultimately hurts and disrupts wagering public, which is the reason we're all here and what we strive to protect. So that's my first comment. I'll answer any questions if anyone has any.
I don't have any questions. I appreciate you bringing that to our attention, and we will look into it with the department to see if we can get that or help get that resolved.
Can I shed some light on that, Mr. Chairman?
I would appreciate it, Director.
Yes. In rule, it basically requires that any change of ownership or management needs to be licensed before they proceed. So bottom line is, I know that what he's saying has occurred in the past. However, I'm not going to allow two wrongs to be a right, so we're going to do it correctly. My intent is to send a letter to all permities informing them that if there's a change of ownership, they don't necessarily have to get city approval because that location is already approved by the city. However, they do have to have their staff license before proceeding. So that letter will be going out to the permities very soon.
Understood. Appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, just may quickly continue. Thank you, Director Casillas. I really appreciate that. Mr. Chairman, if I may, I have one more brief comment.
Go ahead, sir.
My second comment is regarding the licensing by the department of track employees, key track officials, company officers, OTB owners, anyone that holds a racing license. Recently, we were informally told that several members of our executive team who are documented on our corporation papers, they're not present in our state, they do not live in our state, they do not take part of daily business operations of our locations, and are not involved at the lowest level, that their license expired years ago. I would ask the department to please be proactive in their approach to informing individuals that require a license. We all have a lot going on right now, but it would be extremely helpful if the department has a way of notifying us via paper mail, email, text, any way possible. If they could just simply inform us that licenses are getting ready to expire. This could solve several problems, obviously, increased revenue to the department of the state, and additionally, compliance, right? The need to ensure that everyone hasn't committed a felony in the last year and therefore can't be licensed. It just seems like in 2022, there should be a proactive approach to informing people they're getting close to their expiration date, and they risk being unable to operate, participate, or compete if they're not in compliance. So I don't know the capability of the system, but I ask if there is a better option that we as the stakeholders be informed and afforded the opportunity to renew within a reasonable timeframe. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you. Appreciate your time.
May I address that one also?
Yes, sir.
All right, the department is currently in the middle of a new platform for the department for licensing with the gaming site, employee certification and vendor certification, event wagering and fantasy sports. However, because there's a difference in budgets, racing and boxing do not have the budget to be included on that new platform. We recently got an update on a software application that we use for racing and boxing, which is used to be the Red Horse program. That has limitations. Boxing and racing do not have the budget to do what Mr. Feinberg is requesting at this point. We're hoping that in due time, when budgets change and the legislature allows us to manipulate the RWA as necessary, that we can get added on this new platform that the department is going to here in the next couple of months. So with that being said, it would be extremely difficult for us to notify these applicants, these licensees of that nature at this time. We would love to be able to do it, but right now it's very difficult for us.
Thanks, sir. We'll move to Arizona Downs permitty report.
We're going to take your advice, Chairman Coolidge, and we'll give our report at the next meeting. Thank you.
I appreciate it. County fairs. Rita? Tucson Greyhound Park doesn't have an update. Turf Paradise?
Chairman Coolidge. This is as an avenue of request that the commission agendizes for the future sometime after Dr. Gale gives a report on track safety. Information reports is not the forum for me to answer Commissioner Gorey's comments about Turf Paradise. If there are questions, I will answer them. If not, I've done for the day.
Any questions? Okay, we will look to agendize something in the future. Optional stakeholders, Arizona County's Racing Association. Arizona Quarter Horse. Arizona Thoroughbred Breeders Association.
Yes, 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 yes. Chairman Coolidge and Director Cassius, I have, this is Lloyd Yotha, with President Arizona Quarter Racing Association. I have a question for you that you might give me some direction about quarter horse racing in the state of Arizona, all tracks. But I need to know, I've given my opinion and concerns about how quarter horse racing is treated in the state of Arizona and statute reads that we are to be offered two races a day, but they have to be written in a condition that we can fill that race. It just says two quarter horse races a day, but it doesn't say it has to be this this type of race or the other type of race. I don't know who to go to anymore because we're getting offered maybe two races, but not two races a day. We're getting offered races during the month, during the week. They're written so that I feel they've been written so that they can't fill or won't fill. And if they do fill, they're excluded for a quarter horse, for a thoroughbred race. And I just need some direction, who I can go sit down with, whether it be the director, the commissioner. I don't know what forum to bring it up to anymore, so I can get some pension. This has been an ongoing issue for years and it's never it never comes to a conclusion.
Director Cassius, do you have any input on that?
Yes, sir. I think that we can meet with Mr. Yotha along with the permities and have an open discussion to see if we can get this resolved.
I'd appreciate that very much, sir.
Mr. Yotha and Director Cassius, I'll let you take that offline.
Yes, sir.
Very good.
Mr. Yotha, thanks for bringing it to our attention.
Thank you.
Arizona Thoroughbred Breeders Association. The HBPA.
Yes, Bob Hutton, Arizona HBPA. I was signed up to speak regarding safety and for some reason I wasn't called out. So I didn't want to interrupt, but.
Mr. Hutton, that's that's my fault. I apologize.
No, that's all right. No harm done. The first thing is Mr. Gray, Commissioner Gray, talked about the RWA. The Arizona HBPA would be supportive in raising the RWA so the department can do their job. We put safety in front of purses as far as that's concerned because when they reduce the RWA, it helped our purse structure. But without safety, there's no racing. So we would support a raise in the RWA. The second thing that I wanted to bring up was, and if Dr. Gale is still available, we have no vets at the track, not a state vet. We don't have any vets at the track on Sundays and people are training on Sundays. So if a horse gets hurt or has to unfortunately be put down or whatever the case may be, there's nobody there. So I don't know if this is a question for Dr. Gale or what we're or for Mr. Cassius, but we've got to get somebody out there to go to and make sure that we could train on Sundays. So can somebody answer that question?
Director Cassius or maybe Representative from Turf or Dr. Gale? I'd be interested in hearing a response to that.
At this point, I'll defer to Dr. Gale. She works closely with the vets.
Think she might have logged off.
All right. Well, I will I will ask the questions with Dr. Gale and follow up with the permities and see what we can do about that.
It is a it's a very important issue as obviously everybody would understand. The the third thing that I wanted to bring up was, you know, Mr. Commissioner Gorey brought up the safety of the animals and the equine athletes out there. And and I just want to bring up, how about the people? How about the humans that come here every day and live here? And this place is filthy and it's nobody should live in these conditions. And it's bad enough when patrons go to the front and the bathrooms smell like urine. And I've had numerous people tell me they won't bring their wives out here. I would go ahead and probably make a comment to Ms. Olson that she would be her it would be horrendous for her to walk into one of the bathrooms here. So I just want to know what's going to be done as far as a human condition for the safety of the people out here where it's not filled with filth and they can actually take a shower and use the restroom. I it's just it's deplorable. So that's the question that I'm looking for. I I'd like to know why why it has to get to this condition before we start screaming from the mountain.
And with with what Bob said, I'd just like to add on the bathrooms. Every time I go out there in the mornings to visit the people on the backside, I make sure I don't drink anything before I go because I want to be empty because I refuse to use those bathrooms on the backside. They're utterly disgusting. And something needs to be done. No one should have to use those restrooms. No one should be living back there in those type of conditions. If those if that was on the other side of the fence, the city of Phoenix would be declaring it a slum. It's that disgusting.
Commissioner, not to not to cut you off and I apologize for that. But just as a reminder, these are stakeholder association updates. If there are items that we are to discuss or excuse me, that non-commissioned members are to discuss to bring up, that would be a general public item.
This is a horseman's period and you are the horseman.
Yeah, are you? Is that directed at me, Chuck?
Well, it's it's an association update. So I appreciate you bringing that up. We will absolutely be looking into it. I know it's something that we brought up in the safety report as well. And Mr. Hutton, I appreciate you bringing it to our attention.
Okay, thank you for the time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. We'll move to 6E, which is the Jockeys Guild. Okay. Identification of items for future agendas. I think we all know the current events that are affecting Arizona Racing Commission. So any of my commissioners have any items to place on a future agenda?
Just the safety. And I was kind of thinking along the lines that safety should maybe be removed out of information reports and moved into an action item area so that we, if there's things we need to take care of, we can act on it and not have to wait another month for another meeting.
Okay, let me discuss with the department and the Attorney General's Office on how that can be agendized and where it would best be placed.
Thank you.
Otherwise, I don't have anyone scheduled to speak for the call of the public. Or the next regularly scheduled commission meeting will be at 10:00 AM on Thursday, February 10th, likely via Google Meet.
Fifteenth, fifteenth.
Oh, it did get changed to the 15th. Excuse me. So the next meeting will be 10:00 AM February 15th via Google Meet, subject to change based on form. And I would hear a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Gray and second by Chair Coolidge. I will do the roll call. Commissioner Gray?
Yes.
Chair Coolidge?
Yes.
Commissioner Olson?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes. The time is 12:30 and this meeting is adjourned.